Good morning. Today is Wednesday, May 13th. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It's 9:00 AM as stated. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. We're calling this meeting to order. We will have the invocation. We will be led in the pledge to the U.S. flag and then the Texas flag. Would you please rise? Shall we pray? Father, we thank you, dear God, for this day and the blessings of this life. Father, we're mindful of the situation that's within our county, our state, our nation, and in your world. And we pray, dear God, that this pandemic diminishes and those that are ill regain their health and that deaths decline or completely stop. Father, we're thankful for those that put themselves on the line. That would be our nurses and our doctors, our first responders. We ask that you particularly watch over them and keep them, Father. Just give us strength as we work through this time. We thank you for, again, all of the blessings that we have. And let us be mindful that you are our Father. And Father, we thank you for your son. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? It is time for public comments. Vanessa Brzezinski, County Clerk, do we have any public comments this morning?
I have not received any.
No statements received. Commissioners, do you have any public comments? Commissioner Walker, it's good to have you back on the court.
Good to be back.
I don't know that that tan brown is your color, but it looks pretty good. Don't judge, you take. All right. Final call for public comments. With that, we're going to move to consent agenda items number three, number four. That is, consider and take action to approve treasurer's list of plans and bills. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. We've had documents for at least 72 hours. Are there any questions or comments regarding either consent agenda item three or consent agenda item four? I move to approve consent agenda items three and four. There's a motion before the court on consent agenda item number three and four by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, or is there any further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Will now go to agenda item number five. Mr. Al Peeler, please. Deputy Cook. Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager Al Peeler, number five, update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, Grimes County Justice Center.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Al Peeler, Building Maintenance Manager.
Yes.
And whatever else you want to talk about.
All right. Did I miss something when he came in?
He is.
Well, the world is watching me.
They weren't watching me last night at 8:30.
Okay.
Jail, what's first on the agenda?
Courthouse.
Courthouse? Yeah, of course. Courthouse is going along decent. We've had some malfunctions, don't cost any money, just had, we finished parging yesterday afternoon. The parge is the A-frame and it's the material used to form the A-frame and your window sills. When they did that yesterday, they were working on it this horizontal. They threw their leg over it, must have stepped in a weak valley and we took water like no other last night.
From the storm.
From the storm. So, they're working on it today. Progress, repointing is complete. Now, windows are complete. Now, we've got a new punch list, which means I get to go in and go, I don't like that, redo that. Same thing with repoint. There's a couple places I don't care for, so we're going to have that renewed. We're going to be close to our timeframe of finishing up in June, except for the doors, I believe. The doors are going to carry us off into probably July, just because of, we have to rebuild, we're making new doors and trim for the jams and stuff like that.
But they already started that process, haven't they?
Yes, they have. We're looking at the end of June, that should be complete. And then, hopefully, that the scaffolding will start to come down the 22nd of June. That's what we're hoping, depending on the weather and all that. That's about it for the courthouse, unless there's any questions about the courthouse.
Grimes County Jail?
Grimes County Jail has been, of course, everybody knows, been put on hold. We're monitoring a couple places on the roof that we think we might have a leak, but we're not sure. If it is leaking, it's no cost to us. It's under a 10-year warranty. So, everything else has been put on hold because of COVID. The control systems, the mold remediation, they did call yesterday and say, hey, can we get paid up today? I told them yes, because there's no sense, they have expenses too for the first half of what they did, and I think they needed paid for that.
Has the sheriff told you when he's going to allow you back in to finish that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Justice Center, good news, good and bad news. Our iron has been ultrasounded, everything looked good there. I made a decision to leave our, they called me, Collier, I said, hey, can we leave it down there? Told them, yes, instead of bringing it up into the mud, it's better to be on the lot. We've already got skin in the game on that iron. It's been stamped ultrasound. And the likelihood of somebody building the exact same building is not, it will be here the 19th, if the weather holds out. I mean, that's when it's going to ship. We're hoping that we can get a good dry weather pattern here, because we are ready to pour the beams. So, the beam says everything for that building. So, we want to make sure that we're in a dry weather pattern. We want to pour it correctly and not get water and stuff on it, because that's the bolt pattern that's going to hold everything up. So, and then after that, we can put carton forms in, we can pour the slack, because our utility lines are underneath the building are complete. So, we have, we had progress, it's just weather now is going to play a factor in the game. Any questions about anything? Come on, Chad.
Doing a great job.
No, that's not, I'm going to one day.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Peeler. With that, we'll now go to agenda item number six, discuss office space needed for Anderson, Texas, Anderson, Texas government, City of Anderson, Texas, Mayor Karen McDuffie.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning. Mayor, if you would introduce yourself to the court and for those that would be watching, just who you are.
Okay, this is Karen McDuffie. I'm the mayor of the town of Anderson. I am here to address the court for the first time. What I'm here about is our office, our city office. We, I don't know if everybody knows, but we have our town building and our office is in one little corner of it. And we cannot get another file cabinet, another person, you really have to turn sideways to get around. So, what I am proposing or asking y'all to look at is possibly, when you build the new Justice Center, if you have any office space available, that, a building you're going to keep, I don't believe that I would be able to talk to the city into buying one of your buildings. But if you have a office space, you know, ultimately, Main Street would be great for the town of Anderson's office, but I know y'all have some buildings there. Y'all take up a lot of real estate here in town, so I'm hoping that y'all can see your way to find a spot for us. So, and, you know, we can work out the details. I just wanted y'all to think about it, see if you might have anything. You know, what I'd like to do ultimately is to be in the middle of town if possible, to have Anderson have a presence here, even, you know, though it is Grimes County, County C.
Sure.
But I'd like to have a place to host visitors, you know, that might want to come to town to set up tourism, some type of thing. I really don't have anywhere to host them, except in that one great big old building with no decoration or anything. So, that's my request to y'all, is to please think about what you might have available. I know it's going to be a couple of years, but if in the meantime, y'all can think, anything you can think to help us out, then we can work on the details later.
One detail, do you have any idea of how much square footing you'd like to have?
I really, no. I mean, if we just had one office, this would be good, this size would be good, I believe. But if we could have two offices, one for, you know, our file cabinets and things, and one to great customers, or, you know, we don't have to have a conference room, but it would be nice, you know, two or three rooms. I don't know, I haven't been in many of the county offices, except here in the annex, so I don't know how they're set up, but we'll make work, whatever y'all might be able to afford us. Okay?
Thank you.
That is my request.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't.
Plant the seed, we'll see if it grows.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, we'll go to agenda item number seven, Grimes County Elections Administrator Lucy Abada. Is Lucy Abada here?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item number seven, discuss and approve the order to enact reasonable regulations for temporary signs on Grimes County property. See attachment number seven.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning. All okay?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so what you have, basically, what we did with the, both the November election and the primaries, signage is always an issue, people don't pick them up, that kind of thing. So, I talked to Judge Balth about, I need something to, where we can force the hand, force it to matter of, hey, you can't put this up, or you can't put it up so far. And he was able to find this. We, you know, made it our own, kind of put it in our county information. But basically, it's just telling people, you're going to do this, you're going to campaign, that's fine, within so many feet, and not anywhere near our property, which would include the area in front of, like, Al Peeler's building, you know, in front of the annex building, things like that, because it needs to be kind of a pain, signs get broken, we have somebody trip over a sign during the primary election, and so I just want to weigh to say, absolutely not. So, pretty simple, very easy. Especially with the November election, that'll get kind of, it'll get out of hand.
Does this present, prevent them from putting them up, or you have a specific space you want them in?
It'll prevent them from putting up on county property. They can put them up, like, on the left-hand side of the courthouse, on the south side, they can put them up all on those buildings, like, on the south entrance side. It'll just prevent them from putting them up either on, because, like, we had to stop several candidates from putting them on the courthouse lines. In fact, the next day, I had to come in and take them down, because they went ahead and didn't anyway. But it'll prevent them from actually putting them up on our property. And that way, if they do ask, well, where's your reference for this, we can put that present.
And this is county property, this would not be like on the City of Navasota property, school property?
Oh, yeah, no. Our polling locations, those are, you know, that can still be done, as long as it maintains the feet requirement, you know, for campaigning, those things.
And that's a hundred-foot requirement?
Yes, yes. Only on county property, nothing else. And mainly, honestly, the biggest issue is just mainly here, and then, you know, your outline counties, like, where the JP's offices are, things like that.
Is that not a state law, though, that they do not put on county property?
It is a state law, but a lot of people, most of the counties have something internally in a local resolution, a local regulation, so that way, we can present, hey, here's your local one, where we can keep posted at all times, present it to them. It makes it a little bit easier, a little bit harder, you know, faster to enact. Except, I did actually reach out to the state to make sure that we could do this, you know, in conjunction with theirs.
Sure. Anybody want to make a motion? I move that we approve the reasonable regulations for temporary sign on Grimes County property. There is a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. We'll now go to agenda item number eight, Grimes County Sheriff's Office Chief Todd Green, consider and take action to approve the First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for Managing Entity by BV COG or BV Wax, attachment number eight. Morning, Chief.
Morning. This is going to be the, our radio system that we became a member of last year, and asked us to be a member of it. We're part of that organization. We have, Madison County has put in a request to join the system, so we have to change the interlocal agreement into managing entity agreement to allow Madison County to come on board. With the addition of Madison County coming on board, they are adding more radio system system, which actually makes our monthly stop cost decrease a little bit.
It increases or goes down?
It decreases.
Oh, decreases, okay. All right, I didn't hear the D. I didn't hear the D.
The radio increase makes the payments decrease a little bit.
Because the more subscribers they have, they divviate the pie up and everybody gets a smaller piece of the pie, so to speak. Okay.
It actually, part of this agreement, Madison County coming on is DPS, there's actually an issue with DPS adding some despots in their radio system. So, they're actually funding the equipment part, Madison County's putting up the tower, and so there's savings in there that's not costing all the, you can't keep the ball, you might really put this thing up. So, then, once we get that up, obviously, we're looking at bringing in the surrounding counties, and then in Hopefield, Robinson County, to even further increase the monthly costs. But this is the standard agreement that we signed when we joined the system. Basically, they just added us as a partner and switched Madison County and other spots. This has been vetted by the county attorney's office.
This, would this also possibly, with the addition of what Madison County's doing, would this give us a little better reception up in the Beidai's area of the county?
Yes, yeah, because they're, I mean, well, now that the Beidai's tower's up, but then also Madison County, they have a tower in their system, so they're all coming to the network and help out with that. This is addressed for the county destiny of the signature.
If there are no questions, I'd like to make the motion to approve the First Amendment of the Interlocal Agreement for Managing Entity by the BV COG for BV Wax.
Second. County Judge has signatory. Just one more paper to sign. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? I'll just make the comment, I think this is a really good thing for Madison County and is going to help us also. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, consider and take action to approve the First Amendment to the Second Restatement of the Interlocal Agreement for the Construction, Acquisition, Implementation, Operation, and Maintenance of BV, did we leave anything out of that? Of BV Wax, see attachment number nine.
This is the actual Interlocal Agreement, we're having to change to approve Madison County. These agreements, you know, you could surely say is vetted, because not only it's gone through our county attorney, but you have to be in agreements with the city, oh, station county attorney, city of Robinson County, Austin County attorney, Brazos County attorney, so all these attorneys have gotten together and drafted this agreement and approved it. So, this is, same old same thing, the management system, this is the actual item.
It's amazing we got that many city and county attorneys to agree.
It's been a couple months in progress.
If there are no questions, I make the motion to the judicial First Amendment to the Second Restatement of the Interlocal Agreement for the Construction, Acquisition, Implementation, Operation, and Maintenance of BV Wax.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number 10, still Chief Green, consider and take action to renew the Common Service Agreement for the ONAN 600K generator located at the sheriff's office, and that would be our attachment number 10. Chief?
This is going to be your annual service maintenance agreement for the generator at the sheriff's office. This is the generator that was purchased for the iCerfing funds that operates the whole building. The agreement is the same as last year, except they were the $35 increase in price for supply.
If there are no questions, I'd like to make the motion to renew the Common Service Agreement for the ONAN 600K generator located at the sheriff's office.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Is that your request, Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
And are you okay with that, Commissioner Cox?
Yes, ma'am.
And the rest of the court?
Yes.
Okay. And the county judge has signatory. Thank you, sir. Grimes County Human Resources Director Lucy Pope, agenda item number 11, consider and approve changing the records management clerk from grade two to grade three, see attachment number 11.
Judges, Commissioners, the county clerk came to me with a job description, which you have, that would like her to change her records management clerk from a grade two to a grade three. So, if you have any questions, please direct the court.
After your review, do you think it complements a Part III level? What would be the effective date on that?
Would this be an increase in salary offering?
Not unless y'all approve your salary increases when we come to the budget.
For budget hearings?
But right now, no, her salary won't change.
Commissioner Cox, that kind of has been your arena. Any thoughts or comments?
Yes, I would agree. I reviewed it and spoken with Ms. Pope about it. It does qualify, I mean, it's actually up to the county clerk to make those determinations.
Okay.
But with regard to the funding portion of it, I do agree with her assessment that we take up the funding portion for this one and the other agenda items in front of us during the budget hearing, and we don't commit those funds today based on the current environment.
So, is there a motion on agenda item number 11?
Judge, I move to approve changing the records management clerk from a grade two to a grade three.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, consider and take action to approve changing first assistant treasurer from grade seven to grade eight, and second assistant treasurer from grade six to grade seven, attachment number 12.
The treasurer did send the job description updated on the first assistant and the second
And as our HR director, do you feel like the changes that have been introduced would necessitate moving those to those higher positions?
Because they have taken, you can, Ms. Tran is here, they have taken on board with the FI and considerably work with that FI more than any of us. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not just FI. We're the office that keeps the wheel turning. We work with all the departments. And the girls are trustworthy, and as their supervisor, I feel like they need to be, their grades need to be changed.
Can you address any of the specific changes from what they've been doing to what they're going to be doing, or what necessitates these changes? And I'm not opposing, am I, just for transparency, what are some of those, and the changes that are happening?
Well, with the FI, there's a lot of things in payroll.
Can I get you come to the podium if you will? And for those in the viewing world, FI is a new software program.
Financial intelligence.
It's financial intelligence, and you do have to have some intelligence to work through FI, so.
And you have to be trustworthy, because there's a lot of confidential stuff that goes on when you're making these migrations. And with the, and you have to be patient, and you have to be dedicated to your job. With this COVID-19 that came on, these girls don't have cell phones, but they were there doing what they needed to do. They were at their homes doing what they needed to do. We have perfect contact with each other all the time. Nobody missed a check, on top of the vendors, and nobody missed a paycheck, as far as I know. So, these positions need to be compensated or moved out to where they should be. And as their supervisor, I'm here to do that. Would y'all agree with that?
Commissioner Cox, any thoughts?
I do have a couple of thoughts. Certainly, don't disagree with the hard work that your staff does, they do do a great job. But each one of these moves or changes in grade level would come with an increase in pay. And under the current environment that we're in right now, personally, I think we need to go through the budgeting process to see where we line out on our financial end of it.
One would be 23 cents, and another would be 37.
Yeah, so.
When it remove up to the different grades. So, for whatever, what all they do, I don't see where there's a problem. And I agree with the budget process. And I'll be back here to talk to you when that comes up.
Yeah, sure. As I would expect you would be. But just a question, if the court decides not to, the court's in a position not to... to fund salary adjustments, would you still want them to be changed to a different grade level?
Yes.
Hopefully, this is based on duties and not the changes.
Not personalities or people, this is their positions, and if you read what I submitted, you will see it's more than accounts payable, it's more than payable, and it's a lot of detail. You come sit in my office for making you fully understand it.
I don't disagree with that at all, I'm fully aware of that, the issue is.
And I answered it.
Where counties are today in terms of with COVID-19. I would like to say I appreciate all of the work your department and the auditors that put in, the FI package is looking better and better every week that we receive, you know, we're able to read it a little bit better, and I certainly appreciate that, I noticed the difference this week especially.
And if you don't understand something, you're looking at with the FI package, just give my office a call, and we'll take care of it. And you'll notice that one and two are similar in duties, and that's because we are cross-trained in that office, if somebody gets sick, we can keep the boat going.
I want to make this comment not to be argumentative, but initially, wasn't FI, the implementation of FI, to make our jobs easier?
And I'm looking for that day to come.
Okay. Do we believe it's the light at the end of the tunnel?
There's always a light at the end of the tunnel, like this COVID-19, there's going to be a light at the end of the tunnel, and when that happens, we'll be back and going just like we were before.
Right.
Yes, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. But it won't, FI won't change some of our process though, like the 941s and dealing with the credit cards and all that, it's, you know, phones. And keep in mind, those girls work from their personal phones.
Sure.
As well as I do.
But these changes you made are based upon the job description as far as, were there additional duties that you didn't note on the last job description? Did those increase, or what?
Those duties increased, we've got department heads that come to us, and we have to sit down and explain things to them, and Senda has gone, the first assistant has gone, and she's still going to coach, or so to speak, people using the new software, and that's going to be on the department heads too, they're going to have to understand things better, and that's where we come in. So yeah, their duties have increased.
So if there's going to be, if there would be a pay adjustment to get them to these next levels, then undoubtedly, they're at the lower end of their current salary grades, is that fair?
Yes.
Would that be right, Lucy?
Mr. Cox has his copy.
And the reason I ask that question is because if they were at the higher end, they could move to the next level or next pay grade, and there potentially could be no salary adjustment. Because we're not talking about salaries at the moment, what we're talking about is, does a job justify going from a seven to an eight, and so on?
Okay, six is starting at 16, seven starts at 17.
Okay.
So the first assistant earns 17, 77 an hour, and a move to eight would be $18 minimum for an eight?
So that's the 23?
Yes.
And the second assistant currently makes 16, 72 an hour?
73.
73, okay. And would move to a minimum of $17 an hour.
It'd be best 30, 37, what did I say?
Well, what I'm getting at the top of the range that they're currently in, they're closer to the bottom than the top, if they're going to.
Right, right, the top range for six is 21, 20.
Right.
And the top range for seven is 22, 45.
So at the moment, we're not talking about the value of a job, we're talking about the requirements of a job being elevated, okay? That made sense to me, I don't know if it made sense to anybody else, but.
Me too.
Made sense to you? Okay. And Ms. Pope, you've been through these, and you would concur with the treasurer? So, at the budget, at the budget time, we would not be considering, well, if we approved this now, then ultimately, what we're doing at budget time, we would automatically take them to the minimum of their new salary grades to keep them in line with our salary policy, our salary grade policy.
It's the court chooses to do that.
That's right. Well, if we, my thought is, if we approve this, what I would believe is if we approve this, to take both of these up a grade and to be consistent with our salary policy, we typically would not, I would say we don't have a choice, but to say consistent with our policy, we would automatically move them up and adjust their salary by the amounts that were calculated a moment ago. And that's something that would have to be done within your budgetary process.
Right. I've already started out with Jesse. I mean, the figures didn't.
Sure.
I think what Commissioner Cox is alluding to or talking about, although we're considering making these changes today, when we come to budget time, we may be having to cut budgets, and so we don't want to say automatically it's going to move, we have to consider it at that time, because we're having to consider an overall budget maybe being decreased. We still have salary caps that have to come into play, I mean, not salary cap, property tax caps. So we're still navigating how all of that's going to transition, so we don't know is what we're saying at this time, and he's just wanting to make, sure, I'm not speaking for you, I'm speaking for myself now, making sure that we can cover what we need to cover in terms of our employees and also services to our citizens. So I don't think today's climate makes us automatically do anything without consideration during that budget time, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, to sum it up, I guess, there is a potential that we may, I mean, I don't know what your budget's going to look like, Judge, but there, we may have to suspend the salary structure in the budgeting process, I don't know.
Well, that would be an option, but what I'm saying, if we do approve these, and my initial thought is, I'm not opposed to approving these, I'll say that, but to be consistent with what we did, when we did put the salary structure, if somebody was below the minimum of a particular grade, when it came time and we approved that salary structure, we went ahead and bumped people up. So if the, if we approve this, then the treasurer might have to go back at her budget and see if there's other areas that she could cut in submitting so that her budget allows for these increases. An option that you just mentioned I hadn't thought of is that we have the ability to suspend that, I don't think that's necessarily a good idea, but it's certainly an option if we get in a crunch situation where we have other things that we need to do versus maintain the levels of the salary structure. So, something to consider. I'm just saying, if we approve these, then we need to be prepared to automatically make those adjustments come October 1, to be consistent with our salary structure as we currently have it.
Yeah, I would say, I'm not opposed to that line of thought, I'm just saying that there is a potential, I think, that we may have to reexamine what we're doing.
Sure. Because there's no doubt it's going to be a tight budget year. And it's not my budget, Commissioner, it's our budget.
You gotta throw it down in front of us first. I'll certainly help you out, I can.
Okay. So is there a motion on agenda item number 12?
Judge, if there's no further discussion or questions, I move to approve changing the first assistant treasurer from grade seven to grade eight, and the second assistant treasurer from grade six to grade seven.
Is there a second?
I'll say my name. I'm sorry, let me run in that to be effective October 1.
No, I'd like to call him. Thank you.
Well, is there any further discussion? I have a motion on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Mallett, excuse me, by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Lucy Pope, agenda item number 13, consider and approve changing maintenance custodian from grade two to grade five, see attachment number 13.
Yes, the maintenance supervisor sent the job description for his custodian, he wants to make a change from a grade two to a grade five.
Morning again, Commissioner Judge.
Morning.
So last year, I did a preemptive strike when you made me department head, and I went ahead and designed all my job descriptions that I see in the maintenance department heading with the new Justice Center. Lino Gallegos has, is my assistant, I don't want to call him a custodian because he does everything that when I, when I can't get to it, he tries to do it, and when he runs into a problem, that's when he calls me. I want to tell you that he is, without him, our maintenance department don't run as smoothly. I know I get a lot of accolades, but he helps me out a bunch. In the, in the packet that was provided, you see the grade five, and I also provided a grade two. In 37 days after being employed, Lino was asking me, I want to learn about the HVA system, and I said, okay, so I sent him down to Climat Tech, and he now can run the system. Why that's so important is you'll have the same system in the courthouse, the same system in the jail, and the same system in the Justice Center. So, not only will I have a backup so I can take a vacation, is he can run it. I make him run it every day, he has to give me reports every day. Now, can.
We're doing all this so you can go on vacation?
That'd be grand.
We're going to take a vote now.
I wish you wouldn't. So then, I also provided him a, the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, he is a Spanish interpreter by the state, and the county has used him as that on his own time. And then there was policies set forth after that, that he does get paid, but it's just another benefit that being a custodian, you don't need to use that. The other thing that I'm most proud of him, he, there's an honors certificate of completion, we went to Houston, he took his last test to become a master of custodian, that took him a little over eight and a half months, I believe, to finish. He never scored under an 87. He has made progress, he has made unbelievable progress in the maintenance department. He also, in the big scheme of things, he will be, he is now the assistant community service coordinator, he is now learning that side of the house. So he's doing everything right to be a five. He is a five, he's doing five stuff now.
For those who might know, for those that might not know, what is the community systems?
Community service.
Because.
So they deal with all your probationers, now, he deals on a day before COVID, he dealt with all the probationers, but he didn't, he didn't deal with the admin side. He was the supervision division side, I dealt with the admin side. Now we're transitioning him into do some of the admin side, I still have to do most of it because I'm the community service coordinator.
And you coordinated that with Walker County?
I did, I have, Walker County openly said, yes, we will accept that. Why wouldn't they? They get two for the price of one, so they all like him over there, he's learned, he's worked with TDC, so he knows how to work probationers. Sometimes I have to whoa him back a little bit, but they're not prisoners, they're probationers. Outstanding job on everything he's done, his evaluation, there's just little things that I'd like to see that, and anybody sitting here in the court knows, that it's experience. He's young, I can troubleshoot stuff by hearing him, nowhere to go, he don't have that experience, and his evaluation says that. Small, attention to small details is what I hit him on, I walk in, I check him, not as often as I would like because I'm doing a lot of other things, but when I do, I see things that I want him to fix, and he does it right away. This morning, we started eight, he was here 7:45 cleaning up the mess, the residual mess that we had at the courthouse. So, he's showing every sign of a five, he's did everything of a five, the requirements of a five. And this is our, this is when we, I believe the two months we're supposed to do this is February and May, is that right, Commissioner?
In your policy?
That's what we're policy. Okay. So that's why we're here. I mean, looking on down the road, when the Justice Center's here, he's going to be stationed here in the courthouse, that's in the overall plan, because community service will be here. He's went to some minor right now, experienced again in time for the historical courthouse. So he's learning all them rules and regulations, and that's way over the two spot, that's why I bring him in, and I, because he's going to be my right-hand man. Not going to be, he already is, but I depend on him a bunch.
Part of, bear with me, part of what you just shared with us was somewhat of a performance review on Lino. But, what you're really asking us to do is take the two-position job that he's currently working in and move that to a five, whether it's Lino or whoever.
Whoever.
Because Lino could win the lottery tomorrow and just give you his resignation.
Well, I hope he takes his boss.
I'm sorry?
I hope he takes his boss.
That's to be discussed, but in all seriousness, the level of the job, whether it's Lino or whether it's somebody else, you're saying it needs to be at the level five, and that was essentially.
No, I don't have a five.
No, I'm saying you need it to be at a level five, particularly once the new Justice Center is here.
Yes.
Because of the requirements and the splitting up of the. Because of the requirements and the splitting up of the duties between you, that person. And we have a very strong belief, whether it gets approved to budget or not, that we're going to have to have an addition, at least one additional person for doing janitorial-type services in the new Justice Center.
Not one.
I know, you prefer two, but I said at least one.
I heard you.
Okay. But my, my point is, so those people would be a two or a three, depending on duties and responsibility. Okay, they would be at level two. This person would have some, I guess, some supervisory duties and responsibilities, mechanical duties and responsibilities, working with their community service duties and responsibilities. And all of that in the job description, in your opinion, takes it to a five.
Right. The five, the five will, the five will be my replacement if I win the lottery or have a heart attack.
Okay. So Ms. Pope, have you been through this?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And I feel like he does need to be moved up to a grade five.
Okay. Commissioner Cox, have you had any review of this?
I've reviewed it, yes. And it's certainly good to hear about all the good things that our employees do. And I think it needs to be presented more often by people. That's just my opinion. But that being said, I'm with you on that. These duties are going to be in place as a level five, regardless of who the employee is.
Absolutely.
And so, he goes by Lino, that's what I'm going to call him.
Yes, sir.
Lino, since you brought him up, is, has been doing most of these job duties already.
Is he?
So it's, there's really no question, I don't think, where he actually should be placed on the salary structure scale. But I have a question for you, and we've discussed it, or at least I made a comment. There may be some potential with the budget that we can't fund this to the level because he can go from $12 to $15 an hour. Would it still be your desire to move him from a two to a five even if we can't fund it at the level that's assigned to a five?
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, yes. But my question to you is, Commissioner, I, yes, I want him in the five role, but we've seen in precedent that, and I get the budget. The only reason we're here is because this is what the policy just dictates. The problem is, how can I justify this man, whoever it be, well, I'm going to put you in a five, but I'm going to make you, I'm going to pay you the two with all the certificates and every requirement that he's done.
How can you justify that?
Mm-hmm. When everybody else is getting certificates of that.
I understand that. And there's pre-COVID, post-COVID.
Got it. But business is business.
You're exactly right. Business is business.
That's right.
And there will have to be some hard decisions made, I'm afraid, in the budget coming up because of business.
I agree.
What are you going to do if you can't fund, if we don't fund it at that level?
I, I'm going to tell him, look, we're, we're, what am I going to do? As a leader, I'm going to tell him, look, here's your job description, here's where you're at, here's your pay description, here's where that pay description is. That will have to be his decision. That can't be my decision. He can say, well, I'm just going to be a custodian then. And then when you want him to be a translator, he's going to go, no, the job description two says I don't have to do that. Supervising, supervisor probationer, I don't have to do that.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's where we're at. That all boils back down to me.
I don't have any problems with that.
I know you don't. I know. I agree. I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, and I'm not trying to make light of it. But I'm also telling you, the only reason we're here to do this is because that's what our policy dictates. And I understand COVID and all that, but at the same time, our employees before COVID have been working to go to that spot. And if we got employees doing the job up and beyond and they are into the next rank, I don't know, you say you take care of your employees, which I'm, I'm taking care of, I'm blessed. But now I, you, you put me in a role that I have to take care of my employees and that's what I'm doing.
Well, I mean, I'll give you some of the things that I'm concerned with. We've got 30 million-plus people unemployed. We've had, we've got businesses in this county that are.
Now, we don't. The nation has 30, Jay.
Okay. However you want to look at it, there are people affected by employment in our counties. We've had businesses in this county that have applied for the payroll protection. Just last week, I heard of a sizable amount of layoffs in one of our bigger companies here in our county. Last week, there was a suggestion that we might need to even borrow money. We've got a food donation program coming up in about three weeks that they're anticipating at a minimum of 200 vehicles going through this line to get food because of furloughs, unemployment, and financial struggles. We have significant amount of restaurants and salons and other businesses that have been impacted by COVID. So when we look at all that and we look at some of the businesses that we, that are in Grand Canyon, are oil-related, that picture isn't great. There is a chance in the future during the budgeting process that we're going to have to make some decisions. And, you know, if employees have to make decisions on what they have to do based on what we can, we can provide at that time, then those will just have to be decisions that are made. But I'm just telling you and asking you, if we have to make those decisions and we can't fund these to the level that's in the structure, if we have to suspend this structure, are you still willing and asking for this to go to a five?
Yes. I mean, but, yes, I, I've answered that question. But at the end of the day, then it'll be the employees dealing. And quite honestly, I, if you're asking him to do more responsibility for being the lowest-paid in the county, I would, I'd have to, I couldn't question him on that.
I couldn't either. There is that possibility.
I agree. I'm just letting you know the other side. Because he's in, he's one of the lowest-paid in the county and we ask him every day to do something different.
But I think to bring us back to the question at hand before us on the agenda. The question is, are we in agreement to take the current grade-two position to a grade-five based on the adjustments that have been made to it, regardless of who is in that position?
I agree.
So that's the question before us. The question is going to come down the road sooner than later. Is there a pay adjustment for the individual? But after COVID, if there is an after COVID, we're then going to be saying, we're going to have somebody in that position and that position is a five and that position pays $15 an hour starting. Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
What I thought I was hearing was you're creating a position five because you talked about keeping a position two. You said, I don't have a five.
I don't have a five. I was the five.
Okay. So although that person now is in a grade two, you're moving him to a five, but you're also creating a five on the structure.
I was the five.
You were the five.
I was the five.
Okay.
And then when we transferred the department head status to me, I said, okay, until the Justice Center gets built and the necessary things, we're going to run as a two and a department head.
Okay.
So that gave the current employee to do his training to get to level five. For, for me to go out and hire a level five to the criteria that I said would, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it's going to be far-fetched for me to have Chad walk in or David walk in or Philip walk in or you walk in and go, I know how to run this.
Which is a possibility you may.
You may. But, so I designed that system with being proactive, knowing that we were doing the Justice Center, that we were going to make him a five because he had more experience, which he does, that's proven. And then we were just going to have two twos.
Okay. Well, you answered my question. You made it clear to me. Okay.
Thank you. There, there is a level five for his department on itself.
Yes, that was done last year. Because I was being proactive and, and setting out my slots for what was coming.
Okay. You have to.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the moving from a grade-two to a grade-five. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 13 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion?
Judge, real quick, sorry. Can we state that what date it's supposed to be made effective? Like we did on the previous one? Are we making it effective now or are you making it effective October 1st?
October 1st.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Dobianski, you made that motion. Commissioner Cox, are you still willing to second that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a 10-1, 2020. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker, Agenda Item Number 14, Consider Approval Of Proposed Replat Of Horseshoe Acres Lots Seven Through 11. We had a public hearing on that this morning at 8:45. And once upon a time, we had just listened to ourselves talk. But here we are.
The replat of horseshoe acres, I think it's 8:45, public hearing. Still five lots. We're adjusting lot lines to create five lots, just different-sized lots. We are recommending approval. They have met all the county's criteria. So we have no objection to replat.
There are no further questions since it's in my precinct. I move we approve the replat of horseshoe acres, lots seven to 11.
A second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 14 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. More bees are a good thing. Okay. Mr. Walker, you want to take us through what you would like to point out on Roden Bridge Report? You feel free to cover all of it or just those most important things that you want us to pay attention to, however you want to run it?
I will. There are just a couple items I'd like to point out. As you're probably aware, TechDOT does a bridge inspection program for us every other year. A given number of years. So we're getting those reports in now. As a result of those reports, TechDOT has asked us to make repairs on three different bridges because of deterioration in the bridges. We are working on those repairs at this point in time, but these were bridges that were not anticipated. These are not the TechDOT Bridge Program bridges that we're replacing. They're not EMP projects. These are just other bridges that have some issues. Our bridge labor contract is being used. They're doing repairs. They finished repairs on one of the bridges on 215 yesterday. There's another bridge on 215 they're working on today. And then they are asking us also to make repairs on the Canal 201 bridge, which we're just starting to do the planning on that. So those are unanticipated. Just because of the condition of the bridges, we need to take care of. And then the other thing I'll just mention quickly, we did finally have a kickoff meeting for the Hurricane Harvey Grant here a week or so ago. That, that particular grant is a smaller grant, $234,000. We have a number of small projects that will be taking improvements on some of our graded structures with that money. And then the other, the only other thing, we are working on the CTIF grant from TechDOT. That application is due the end of this one. There is a report that I'll be bringing before you next time, next court meeting, that looks at the road conditions and some of the issues that they wanted addressed in that grant application. So that's just a future attractions. Any questions?
I have a comment for you. I got a caller yesterday from the, you know where they're taking the, the plant out of, off of 246 there?
Yes, sir.
They called and asked, should they open that ditch back up when they shut that entrance off? And I told them, yes, go ahead and do that and then we would maintain it. But they're going to close that. They've moved everything out of there. They've leveled that back out.
Remove the culvert and everything where that entrance is.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just real quick, are you still having your, your crews take their vehicles out to job locations or have?
We, we are. We're allowing them to take their personal vehicles so they don't have to share, run, pick up truck or whatever. We are taking more of the equipment back to the shop in the evening and driving them back to the work sites also. Create a situation where they don't have to ride together if they're not comfortable doing that.
Okay. And it seems to be working out okay?
It's worked out okay. It creates a little bit of lost time when we're having to load the vehicles back to the work site, but it hasn't been a major issue.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do, we do have some that can be used to work together in the same vehicle. There's no point in us taking separate vehicles to the job site to ride to it from. So they go ahead and do that. And I'm letting them use their discretion on those things.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 15, Consider And Take Action To Select Salary Grievance Committee, SGC, according to Local Government Code 152.014 and 152.015. And for the world about us that doesn't know, that has to do with during the budget time, if an elected official has a grievance in regards to their salary, then the government codes have a process that we go through. And part of that process is that we do need to select at least three members from the grand jury list, and that is the grand jury list from January and July 2019. The county clerk has already put those names in a, sort of like a fishbowl. But the question before us at this time, Commissioners, is do you want to have, and I don't know, Shereen, do we have the attachment of the code in front of us?
I have it right here.
You have it? If, if you would, can I get you to come to the podium?
Yes.
And if you would give us the breakdown, because in one instance, there are six elected officials, I believe it is, that participate on that Salary Grievance Committee and only three of the grand jury, or we have an option of more grand jury personnel.
Right. So I'll read the code.
Thank you.
So it says in each county, there is a salary grievance committee composed of the county judge and the sheriff, the county tax assessor-collector, the county treasurer, the county clerk, the district clerk, the county attorney or the criminal district attorney, and then a number of public members necessary to provide nine voting members. necessary to provide nine voting members. Or you could choose to have nine public members, if the commissioner court votes to have nine public members. But the county judge is chairman of the committee, but is not entitled to vote. And the public members must be residents of the county. So we have to have total of nine. So if we have all of these elected officials, then you'll only need two.
Two? Okay.
But it's suggested you pull alternates as well.
Right.
So it's your decision, you know, to have all public members, or have your elected officials and the two.
And the county judge is the chairman if you pick all public, but does not have a vote, correct?
Correct.
And that's nine?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're clear that it's two and not three?
Well, if you count the judge, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So there's seven elected officials, so then you would need two more to provide nine. Yes.
But we have selected more than that in the past because we put alternates.
Sure, because some people may not be available.
Some of them won't show up.
Right.
Now, we were prepared last time, although we did not have to initiate the Salary Grievance Committee.
Yes, this is just in case we need it.
Okay.
So, before us, we make the decision that, do we want to have elected officials on the grievance committee? Or not? And then if we don't want elected officials on the grievance committee, then we'll draw the names. If we do want elected officials, then we'll draw, obviously, we got four names that would give us the two, and then two alternates. Do you recall what we did last time, Shereen? How many did we draw?
Six or nine.
We drew quite a few.
Okay. Well, we can draw as many as we want, and just have the number record.
Just start.
The order start at the first one.
And what situation were we? We probably need to draw a bunch of them, because some of them may not want to show up.
Well, that's a good point. Good point. And I have a list of, we have a list of 24 that could be drawn from, so.
Are we making the decision to, first of all, to go with, whether we go with elected officials and the public?
Yes, we are.
Or do we go with the nine members from the public?
The first decision we're gonna make is, do we go with elected officials?
I move that we do.
So the first part of this that we are considering is that we will go with elected officials, and then round it out with grand jury members. And if I heard correctly, Commissioner Dobianski made the motion, and Chad Mallett, Commissioner Mallett made the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of us using elected officials and then drawing grand jury members to fill out the number? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay, motion carries. Therefore, if you will bring me the fishbowl, or candy bowl, or candle dish, or whatever that is, thank you. And I'll draw the first one out. And it is, grand jury is public information, is it not? Mr. Foltz?
Yes.
The question is, when we draw grand jury members to fill out the Salary Grievance Committee, is that information public as to, can we publicly state their names?
It's already been stated. The grand jury identity is not confidential.
Okay.
You need something else on that, I can go get my materials that are out there in the hall.
I just wanted to make sure that we could publicly state.
In the past, we've always done that. My identity is not confidential.
Thank you.
And Judge, these are last year's grand juries.
That's correct.
Current grand jury.
So number one?
May I go back to the bullpen?
You may, sir. Thank you.
Pay when you need a writing. Just make the call.
Genesis Guzman? Do you want my, do you have your list in front of you, or, okay? Renda Sexton? My two, so so I'm gonna write two. William Wise? That's the third call. William James Mason, number four. Melissa Castleberry, number five. Commissioner Dobianski and Commissioner Mallett, how many would you like me to draw?
That's five.
Robert Butler's, number six.
I'd say about eight. What do you think?
Because we're only trying to get two. And I pulled out two. Number seven would be Jocelyn Conrad.
Is that Jacqueline?
Jacqueline. Number eight? Richard Schwarzenbach. Whatever happened to the Bob Joneses and the Mary Longs? Well, we got a bunch of big names here. All right. That's a number eight. So does the county clerk and my chief have those? All right. And those letters will be sent post hoc.
Today. Or tomorrow?
All right. Eight call. Agenda Item Number 16, discuss and take action to determine official name of New County Business Justice Center. We've had a little discussion. We've had a little debate on that. Something that was offered in my direction was that why don't we put it out and let people submit and vote on that? I don't, I'm not opposed to that, but it's up to the court. We had some discussion, don't name it after, or at least first and last name, don't name it after an individual.
Well, I think you waited for me to put in my two cents, too.
That's, yes, ma'am.
And my biggest, one of my concerns was, in keeping with earlier, or we started last year, changing emails, website, to Grimes County, Texas, you know, as our branding, you know? So everybody would be saying, the public would know exactly. They didn't have to go to county of Grimes, C-O dot Grimes. I just believe the name Grimes County Business Center, Business and Justice Center, would be sufficient in light of, he's already, the county is already Grimes County. How many people would know the first name Jesse if they were Googling, you know? I just believe that we've started this branding effort of making everything the same. All of our other buildings, like Commissioner Cox said once before, are Grimes County, you know, under that name, which is still Jesse Grimes. So I just wanted to add my two cents of, I think it should remain, or it should be Grimes County, because we worked so hard to change everything across the board, Grimes County, in terms of branding.
Okay, you also suggested two different things, Grimes County Business Justice Center, and then you went back, Grimes County Justice Business Center.
Well, whichever way you want to put business or justice. It was suggested that we put business in front of justice, because everybody wouldn't understand that this is two parts. So any business in Grimes County, Grimes County business, whether it's judicial, or whether it's just, you know, services for Grimes County.
Commissioner Mallett, any thoughts or comments?
I agree. I think it should be named Grimes County. Now, whether it's business justice, or justice in business. Yeah, I'm up there for that.
Commissioner Dobianski?
I still think we should go with Jesse Grimes Justice Center to incorporate the history of Grimes County and the history of Texas in the center. I think we're too, today, too much, we are moving away from our history, not only of the county, but the state and the nation. That's my feelings.
Okay. Commissioner Cox?
I'm still of the opinion that we name it, all of our other buildings in Grimes County, as Commissioner Walker has pointed out, are prefaced with Grimes County. It's been a naming pattern for 125 years, and I hadn't even thought about what she brought up. I mean, we're trying to brand the county as Grimes County. And every search engine that you're going to access to find that information, more than likely, the general public is gonna type in Grimes County first. And I don't know what a specific name, how that would affect anything. So, I mean, I'm still of the opinion it needs to be named Grimes County.
Do you have a preference, business than justice, or justice than business?
I do not, Judge. I mean.
Sir? Go ahead.
I'd just like to point out, it'd probably be better, justice and business center, because if you abbreviate, GCBJ Center, for millennials and forward, it could be a running joke over the abbreviation of the center.
Which is?
GCBJ?
I don't want to explain that any further. Sir, I apologize for my intention to make a joke in the court, but it's the future of the county.
And I'd like to add to something he alluded to last week also. We have so many who have contributed to making this time, making this building possible over the years. You've had county judges that moved the county out of the red into the black, that started the process of trying to get this building built. We've had one that signed to say, go ahead and build. It's just been a lot of people who have contributed to where we are now. And like I said, I feel like the state or Grimes County has already had that honored distinction to Mr. Grimes by naming the county after him. He was a state senator. He signed the Declaration of Independence. All of those great things, but even since that time, you've had other people who have contributed significantly to this county. And so I just feel like, just if you leave it at Grimes County, you're not hurting anybody's feelings, including Mr. Jesse's. Grimes feelings, you know? I just believe that, you know, it just leaves it to where we're not pointing out any one person.
I'll make one comment on whether it is justice or business. I think there's gonna be a lot of business done here, but kind of the main focus and impetus of having this building built is, we need more courtroom space, which would be justice. So I kind of think the idea of justice before business would probably be a bit more appropriate.
And I have no objection to that, whichever route that goes.
Mr. Peter, since you're back in here, I'd ask you a question, because it's going to be justice and business center, or business and justice center. Does it need to be and, or would asper sign be the correct symbol, or?
It doesn't have to have.
I don't know.
So, cheap, I mean, cost-wise, be the sign, so it don't have to have three extra letters.
Maybe two extra letters.
And?
Well, if you had asper sign, that takes place in one of the letters.
Yeah, be two letters.
I'm not following.
So if you just have the?
Asper sign. You're gonna have that, aper sign.
Right. Grimes County, justice, symbol.
It doesn't have to have a symbol. I don't.
Business. So, you just say, save money if you go with the symbol. Depending on how you want it to look on the building, you want it all spread out? Or do you want a slash mark? Grimes County Justice slash Business?
Well, something this important, I think we need to have a consensus of how it's going to look, what would be most appropriate.
I'm not an English teacher, but I've always been taught, if you've got a formal document, you spell it out.
That's good advice. You live with a teacher, don't you?
I do, yeah.
John C., are you still out there?
I didn't understand the asterisk.
Sir, on formalizing, we're discussing the name of the Justice Center. And I'm of the opinion that it ought to be justice and business center, because the main impetus of that building is we needed more courtroom space. However, we haven't decided on that. But what we're asking now is, should it be justice, whether it's justice or business first, it doesn't matter at this point, justice, aper sign, business, or should you spell out the word and?
You can, you need your legal opinion on it.
You can give it whatever name you want, and you can change it tomorrow. The issue is the signage, right?
Yes, sir.
So what you're asking is, what do you want on the sign?
Well, yes, and what somebody said, Commissioner Cox said, he's always been told that if you're gonna be more formal, that you would spell out and versus have an asper sign.
I can't disagree with that.
Okay.
I mean, I think either way, you're gonna be fine, but if it's gonna be more formal, typically, it's spelled out.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to see, was it a law against the asterisk sign?
Neither is illegal.
Peter?
How's it in the scope, Commissioner Mallett? Do we, do you remember? I don't think it was.
I believe they put it on the sign. It was always kind of justice and business center.
Yeah.
It had the Grimes County on there, some of the stuff he drew up.
Right. So, whatever you guys decide, we'll get it worked out, one way or another, because there is something in the scope. I just don't know if there's a limit on characters or whatever. So, as soon as you guys let me know what you want to put on the side of the building, I'll get right with Michael and say, this is what we've decided.
Do we have a consensus on justice then business, or business then justice?
I like justice and business.
Okay. Commissioner Dobianski? Commissioner Walker?
To the Justice Business Center, it doesn't matter.
Well, okay, but do you have a preference?
No.
Commissioner Cox? Justice or business, business or justice?
Justice and business seems to be the appropriate additional information.
I believe there was also some additional signage for each of the entries to the courts, and then for the administration. You originally put administration. I don't think we'll just put that as?
Business?
Business, or if we would actually label each of the tax offices, or?
Well, yes, they're gonna have their individual signs inside. The outside does say admin.
Yeah, on his mock-up, it has admin, administration.
Right.
We want to call it business.
But somebody could perceive that as, you know, like the internal office. But somebody could perceive that as, you know, like the internal offices that we have, like auditor, treasurer, where they don't know they can do business with the county clerk, and they don't know they can do business. So it seems like to me, business would handle it all, you know? Administrative, they might think, well, this is just.
No, not the building. I'm talking about for the additional sign for the entryway for the administration. We call it business or.
Above the doors, they have administration and I think judicial thing.
Oh, I got you.
And we can.
Divide off.
Yeah, for the two entrances, because you have a secure side. We know it as a secure and non-secure. But for the architects, they have administration, I think it is judicial, but I'm judicial area, I think. So.
If they were basing the cost on lettering, business is going to be cheaper. You look at the signage and it says administration.
It'll say admin.
Admin? So we're going to abbreviate?
Listen, I didn't make the plan to make sure. I'm just telling you what's on it. I didn't become an English teacher. I'm still a English guy.
If we, if we push this.
It's our call, I think.
If we push this.
I don't know if we specify them or not.
If we push this to the next court, we would have time to talk to Michael, our architect.
I, this is what I would suggest. You make your decision and we go, and I go and say, okay, this is what we've decided. And if there's something that is wrong with that decision, then it, and this is totally, I'm not telling you how, when I bring up the building reports, I'll bring that to you, and then we can make a decision on that.
Yes.
That sounds okay to me.
All right. Was it last time? I'm getting angry.
Well, if there's no further questions, can I make a motion?
Sure. On the agenda item we're talking about?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I would like to make the motion that we make the official name of the new county justice business center, Grimes County, this justice business center. Yes, it right, it's justice business.
Justice and business.
Justice and business.
Grimes County. Justice and business.
Is that your motion?
That is.
Grimes, okay, the motion is Grimes County Justice and Business Center. Commissioner Mount, did I hear you second that? There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 16, that we take action to name the new facility, the Grimes County Justice and Business Center. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Got you. I'll take care of it.
All right. I received on agenda item number 18, receive, I'm sorry, number 17, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize a county judge as signatory. I received a text from the emergency management services coordinator, and he suggested leaving the burn ban as is, which would be no burn ban. That's his recommendation for an agreement. We'll move to agenda, are we in agreement to that?
Mm-hmm.
Move to agenda item number 18, receive any updates on the strategic plan to offer. Hearing none, we'll go to agenda item number 19, motion to adjourn, is there one?
I move we adjourn.
I believe that was Commissioner Dobianski made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, we're adjourned.